Good evening, everyone. A call to order, the City Commission regular meeting for June 4th, 2018. Tabitha, would you do roll call?
Mayor Haynes.
Present.
Commissioner Guthrie.
Present.
Commissioner Lewis.
Present.
Commissioner Badway.
Here.
Commissioner Wilkins.
Present.
Thank you. Thanks for invocation. Mother Christine, we need your invocation.
Almighty God, our heavenly Father, send down upon those who hold office in Eldorado, the spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice, that with steadfast purpose they may faithfully serve in their offices to promote the well-being of all people through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Thank you. Please join me in pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Moving on through agenda, don't have any proclamation or recognitions tonight, no personal appearances. Move on to public comment. Anybody from the audience wish to address the commission? Seeing none, we'll move on to consent agenda. Those items in the consent agenda were sent out with our commission packet earlier, late last week, so any questions or comments on the consent agenda? If there are none, I would entertain a motion.
I move that the consent agenda as presented be approved.
Second.
It's been moved in seconds for the consent agenda as presented. Any further comment? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Now, any old business will move some new business. Item 12 on our agenda would be presentation of our 2017 audit by Karen Lynn of Reebok and Train.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thanks for joining us.
Appreciate a few moments of your meeting this evening to present the results of the audit. The, I believe you have copy of a document that's titled "Report to the City Commission." That is the summary of the audit process and the conclusions from the audit and what I want to spend a few moments going through with you. So if you, if you're following along in that document, just turning just past the table of contents.
I don't think we have that.
Oh, you don't?
We do not have that.
It's not in the packet.
Not in the packet. It was emailed to us.
No number 12.
It was not.
Okay.
Yeah, it was number 12.
David sent it out to us to read, didn't you?
I sent it.
Was that your?
Karen, we trust you.
Okay. I will, I will go through it and if you have any questions, please let me know. Our responsibility is to perform the audit in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards, government auditing standards, as well as the Kansas Municipal Audit and Accounting Guide. All of those standards require that we plan and perform the audit so that at the end we can form an opinion as to whether the financial statements are free of material misstatement. So that's the objective we have in mind as we plan our audit procedures. That includes, of course, looking at documentation, supporting the financial statement amounts, the financial statement disclosures, looking at internal controls to make sure that they are functioning as they are, as they're designed. And at the end of that process this year, we were able to issue unmodified opinions on the financial statements, which basically says that in our opinion, those financial statements are free of material misstatement. Other things that we look at during the audit process include accounting policies. We look at the policies to make sure that they are appropriately designed, that they're consistently applied, and that there's nothing unusual in any of those policies that we would need to bring to your attention. This year, there was one new Governmental Accounting Standards Board Statement, number 74, called Financial Reporting for Post-Employment Benefit Plans Other Than Pension Plans. And that new GASB standard really required some additional disclosure items related to the post-employment benefit plans. There will be another one next year, GASB Statement, number 75, which will actually require some new adjustments to the pension plan numbers, but this year, for the one that we adopted, there was really just new disclosures. We also look for any significant or unusual transactions, and if we identify anything in that category, we will review it to make sure it's appropriately handled and recorded. We did not have anything in that, in that category that we need to bring to your attention. Also, as a part of the process, of the audit process, we look at significant accounting estimates. And although there's four that we have in these, in these financials that we consider to be significant accounting estimates, there are additional ones that are, that are not considered to be significant. So the ones that I want to mention to you are the four that are considered to be significant accounting estimates. And those include the accrued self-insurance claims, the water storage space, the net other post-employment benefit obligation, and the net pension liability. All of those are reliant on an estimation process. Some of those include an estimation process that involves an actuarial valuation and another firm that's actually calculating an estimated number to be recorded. And we look at all of the processes included in the city's accounting process for recording those, and we determined that they were all reasonable. We did have audit adjustments that were made as a part of the audit process. Those audit adjustments are in that packet when you have a chance to look at it. They're the last pages in, in that packet. They're provided there for your information. In addition, we identified some that we call past adjustments, adjustments that are identified related to the financial statements, but they're not significant enough, either qualitatively or quantitatively, to actually make into the financial statements themselves. So there's a schedule of those as well. Those are called, that schedule is summary of past adjustments, and then the ones that we did make are the ones called adjusting journal entries. So you'll find both of those in that packet, and they're, they're just for your reference on the adjustments that we, that we did make. Other items that we would bring to your attention, if we had any difficulties with management, disagreements about any auditing or accounting matters, if there were any, any pieces of information that we requested that weren't provided to us, and you can, you can see the types of things that would be in that category. Those items would be red flags, of course, of more serious issues, and we would make sure to bring those to your attention much earlier than this evening. So there's nothing that we have to report in, in that area or any, anything that could be an indication of red flags, red flag of more serious issues. So as we, as always been the case, Tammy and her staff do a great job pulling together information for us, having information ready when we arrive to do the audit. And I always like to, to remind governing bodies that, that the, the process for the audit really is a year-round process. There is a lot of work that goes into internal controls, processing transactions, identifying information for the financial report, and that happens all year long, not, not just during the time that we're here performing the audit. So, so I do want to pass along our appreciation to Tammy and, and her team for the hard work that they do all year round for this audit process. We did have one significant deficiency that was identified during the audit, and it's related to the journal entries that I mentioned earlier. Our audit standards require that we identify a significant deficiency in internal control over financial reporting if there are journal entries that are made as a part of the audit process that are significant to the financials. And we did have significant adjusting journal entries, and so, so we have issued a significant deficiency. This was the case last year, so it's repeated in the current year. And that is described on page 136 of the financial statements, which are, which are not completed yet, but the draft has been issued and we're getting ready to finalize those here before, before too long. And so you'll be able to see the description of that on page 136. The last item that you will see in your packet is a copy of a letter, that is Management's Representation Letter. This is a letter that really concludes the audit process every year. The signatures on that letter indicate that the financial statements are ready to be issued in final form, and there's a lot of good information in that letter, so we encourage you to read through it. It can help you identify the policies that surround the financial statements, and, and we believe it's good information for you to read through, so we encourage you to do that. With that, I would open for any questions anyone might have.
Any questions? I have a few. Help me understand what constitutes a significant deficiency?
We evaluate internal controls as a part of our audit process, and items will get categorized into three areas. One is a deficiency, and then if it's a little bit more serious, it's considered a significant deficiency, and then a deficiency that is the worst-case scenario would be called a material weakness. And those, the varying degrees of those really depend on how other mitigating controls would or would not be able to catch an, an error that's designed within an internal control system. And so, the, and as I said, many of the internal, many of the deficiencies as a report then may have to do with segregation of duties, or, or, for example, bank reconciliations not being performed timely. Those are a certain group of deficiencies. The one that we have here is because we had adjusting journal entries in the process, which really means that the financial reporting system did not identify everything that was needed for the financials to be in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles.
So nothing necessarily be alarmed about? I just want to be.
Right.
Significant deficiencies is an alarming.
It sounds dramatic.
Yeah. So I just want to make sure that.
Right. No, I think it's, you know, the financials, which you don't have in front of you, but it's, it's a very thick document with a lot of pieces of information in it. And, and the fact that there's some journal entries that were made to the massive amounts of financial information is the reason for that significant deficiency, and our standards really require that we report it that way. So I would agree that it's not, it's not an earth-shattering deficiency. I would be much more concerned if the deficiencies were in the area of a lack of segregation of duties, or, or things like that, where people may have control over the money individually.
So it's more, it's more about a deficiency of accounting practice rather than, rather than, I don't, rather than a dollar amount? Is that?
Right. It's, it's related to your, the financial reporting process, the development of the financial statements.
Okay. Thanks. Not pointing fingers, I just want to understand what's.
Right. It's a.
Well, she didn't throw a fit this year, so I mean, we're, I mean, it wasn't that big of a deal.
Oh, I'm throwing a fit, exactly.
No.
Get rid of that one.
So, I mean, it's just that, I mean, I guess, layman's terms. What, what you just described to us was is that we found something later down in the path that should have already been identified, and then we made a correction? Is that, is that, I mean?
Yes, that's, that's a good way of starting.
Okay, so we.
Journal entry.
Yeah.
It was just, okay.
Yeah.
So it's been corrected with the journal entry?
Correct. That is correct.
And we have journal entries, which is, what's the red flag? It's the dramatic deficiency.
Okay. The other one I have is, question I have is, you said in your, in your description you used the word "past," and I expected that to be "past," P-A-S-T. As I read this report, it's "past," P-A-S-S-E-D. Would you help me understand what is a, a, help us, a past adjustment?
Sure. So that, we just talked about journal entries that we actually made to the financial statements. We also identify some journal entries that, because they're either qualitatively or quantitatively not material to the financial statements, meaning they, they either are small enough that they don't significantly impact the financials, or qualitatively, they don't have a significant impact in changing the way something might be viewed in the financial statements had they been made. Because they fall underneath the thresholds for both of those, we accumulate them, but we don't actually make the adjustments in the financials here. They're, they're just accumulated, but we don't do anything with them.
Okay.
But we, again, we still accumulate them so that we can determine whether or not they become significant when all added together, but we don't, we don't actually make them to the financials.
Okay. Okay. Those were my two questions. Anybody else? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Karen.
Appreciate it. Enjoy.
We'll anticipate, this is a draft form, we'll anticipate a final form. What's the timeline from here forward?
Right now, the Management Discussion and Analysis Letter, the Transmittal Letter, and the Statistical Section in the back are being processed by, by Tammy and her, and her team. So we've received some of that already, and it just continues to come every day, so I don't know the exact timeframe, but.
What is the review process? So what we're getting it all done this week?
And once we get that in our possession, then it will be a very short timeframe till everything is finished. So I would say next week.
Okay. So do you come back, or?
I can if you would like.
Oh, I was just asking. Didn't know if I needed to say, "See you next year."
Yeah.
"You did a great job," or, "See you in two weeks," or?
Yeah. I will not come back for another presentation unless you have questions for me.
So you ought to report something we post online, or just make it available if somebody asks?
Yes. You post online, so people can access it and read it at their pleasure. It's a pretty, pretty large volume, so.
It is. Yep.
It's your competency in annual financial reports.
Okay. It's part of the cap. Okay. All right. That's what I thought. Just wanted to make, say that out loud. Thanks.
Thank you. We appreciate the opportunity to work with you again.
Sure. All right. I think we've got projects 504, 534, sidewalks, bike path.
Yes, Mayor and Commissioners. Bids were opened last Friday on these projects. Project 504 is the construction of sidewalks on Sixth Avenue from Orchard to Star Street. And Project 534 is the construction of a bike path on the south side of McCollum Road. Bids were received, as I said, Friday. The low bidder on Project 504 was SBS Surface Protection Services with a bid of $97,912.50. And on Project 534, low bid was the same, SBS Surface Protection Services with a bid of $66,365. Tonight, we're recommending that you direct the city manager award the con, sign the contract, and move forward with these projects. We did only receive two bids. The other bidder was Pearson Construction. We had had contact with a, a large number of prospective bidders on this, invitations as well. There is a deadline on this project of August 1st for completion. So I talked to some of those folks, they were a little reluctant because of that, but we were quite surprised that only two showed up at the letting. But we feel, and after discussing it with SBS, they feel confident in their bid, and we feel confident in their work and recommend.
So, tell me, I'm sorry, I was reading while you were saying the bid results. Who was, SBS on 504 with what number?
Yeah, on 50.
$97,912.50.
$97,912.50.
$37,000, yeah.
And on 534, it's 60?
$66,365.
In here, you have estimates for 504 at 184, and 534, 142, so we really are that far under the estimate?
Yeah. They.
So the 66, is it split 50/50 with the districts? Do they realize the same savings that we do, or is that right?
It will be. That's the way the agreement was, and the agreement was up to my estimate. So they are the benefactors of this as well. Granted, there will be some other potential miscellaneous costs associated in engineering in there, but.
Yeah.
But it's construction.
Did you have a talk with Pearson to make sure that, because that's a big jump between the two?
I can tell you, Pearson is the one that is building Country Club Road for us right now, has, has an eight-foot sidewalk on it as well. And to compare bid unit cost, they bid $315 a square foot of concrete on Country Club Road for Bike Path, and you look at their bids here, it's pretty apparent they were adding something to it.
Yeah.
$750.
Right.
Okay.
And they're, I mean, and SBS is confident in their number, like, they're not, they're not.
I honestly think if, if we would have had some of the others, concrete folks that we talked to come and bid, they would have been closer to SBS's numbers.
Okay. There's one.
I, I called them, I called them, talked to them Friday, called them again today, and we discussed it, and they were excited about the opportunity and looking forward to getting on.
I think it's great, local firm.
No, I'm happy.
No, 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 I'm just, I just, I think it's great. No, I saw that, I thought that was quite.
I've seen contracts with both state change orders, so that's why I'm, just, yeah, okay, cool.
Yep. There's controls in place for change orders, so.
I just.
Yep.
And the dinghy is name-based bid. Okay. Any other further que, any further questions? Bits? If none, I entertain a motion.
I move that Cent Surface Protection Services has submitted the lowest and best bid of $97,912.50 for Project Number 504. The city manager be directed to award the contract to said contractor, providing that the company furnishes the proper bonds.
Second.
I move in second. Any further questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. I need a motion for 534.
I move that Cent Surface Protection Services has submitted the lowest and best bid of $66,365 for Project Number 534. The city manager be directed to award the contract to said contractor, providing that the company furnishes the proper bonds.
Second.
I move in second. Any further comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Good, thank you. Next on our agenda would be the Project 491, Griffith Street, and setting a public hearing to spread assessments.
I apologize, I got out of order here. Yeah, the paving of Griffith and Locust Avenue is complete. At this time, we're asking you to set a public hearing on June 18th. Property owners within the Improvement District will be notified by mail of their assessments. Total cost of the project came in at $773,377.53, with the Improvement District share being $433,782.11, and the remaining cost being city alarm.
Much of that $433, is that not city-owned property on Griffith Street there?
That would be, yeah, the recycle center, the corner of Locust, both corners of Locust and Griffith, the Millings pile.
Civic Center.
Civic Center, correct.
So, how much is our share? Really just Century Plastics in the corner?
Both are already C's, Century Plastics, Sunny Stop. You have the mobile home, or the trailer park on Locust.
Okay.
And I do not have those broken.
Okay.
I will have, I will have them at the next meeting.
I mean, I think that of the overall, if you remember, no.
Okay.
And this one was, this one was initiated by who? Who initiated this project? Was it Sunny Stop?
I would say initially it was discussed with, with their project, yes, and the City Commission went ahead and moved forward and initiated the project themselves. They did not have a petition.
The city's share is about $252,000.
$252, okay.
And then that would come out of that 433 number, right? Is that correct?
Yeah.
improvement district would be 433?
433, and then on the back of that is all of the, break out of the assessments. I just roughly have the city's portion of that.
Oh, I got you. Okay.
Two and a half to on that sheet.
And then we have the, the 339, the at-large.
Right.
On top of that.
Correct.
Okay. Any further questions? May I entertain a motion to set a, a public hearing?
Mr. Mayor, I move to set the public hearing for 6:30 p.m. on June 18th, 2018, to be held for the purpose of considering proposed assessments of Project Number 491, and further direct individual mailings to each owner liable for the special assessments.
I'll second it.
It's been moved in second. Any further comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Scott, you're still up.
I am. I'll get this going here, if you don't mind. The next item here, we're discussing bike lanes and no parking along Country Club Road. We discussed this at the work session a little bit last week. What we are proposing is, and I apologize, I can't read that from here, so I'm going to walk up to the podium. First off, in, in these red areas, this is Country Club Road from 12th Avenue on up to what would be 29th Street. We're proposing no parking on both sides of Country Club Road from McCollum Road north to 29th Street, and we're proposing no parking on the east side of Country Club Road from 12th Avenue north to Skyview Drive. With that, we're asking you to consider a bike path on the east side, east side of Country Club Road. This is what the section, and this is just kind of a little blow up of what it might look like with shared the road symbols from Skyview Drive to McCollum. We're proposing not restricting on-street parking through that section. And then this would be an actual white lane line strike from 12th Avenue to Skyview Drive on the east side of Country Club Road.
What is the width of the lane, bike lane?
It'd be eight feet from the face of the curb.
Okay. And that leaves how much of the street left?
The road, the road from, from face of curb to face of curb is 40 feet wide.
Okay. Leaves 32.
Are you gonna, are you planning on putting a line down to deviate, or to signify there's those lanes for cars, like on any other?
No, we aren't. Most of the time, when you see a lane down the center of a road, it's, it's because of warrant, like the number, it has so many vehicles per day. You see those on your higher-volume roads, and Country Club Road doesn't have that volume of traffic.
Yeah.
To warrant. But yeah, yeah, hopefully one of these days, yeah.
Well, I just feel like it's gonna get a lot of traffic. Well, I just feel like it's gonna get a lot of traffic. Yeah.
But yeah, something, something, and we do audit things like that annually, we look at things like, is it appropriate to stripe the street, or crosswalks, or looking at accident reports, so things like that. We evaluate, try to look at them annually.
Do we currently have parking on the east-west side of Country Club Road right there?
Yes.
And thirty, do you feel thirty-two feet's enough to accommodate the parking in then? Okay.
With that, with this traffic shift, are you looking at a light right there?
At Twelfth, or?
At Twelfth and, Twelfth and Country Club?
No.
Okay.
No. It would tie in really nicely with the existing bike path along Twelfth Avenue there, and then on further to McCollum, which was just approved earlier. And then Country Club north to Grand View Elementary. I would say bike lanes are gaining interest again, and it was a number of years ago that we evaluated and looked at all the routes and kind of corridors around the city where we could do this sort of thing. At the time, we presented that, there was a little hesitation about no parking restrictions in some of those areas. So, we put a lot of signs up, the share of the road signs that you've seen around town on different areas, but definitely something maybe we should, you know, look at again, see if there's some other things we can do.
Now, at some future time, are we going to be talking about McCollum on north on Country Club?
That kinda, that kinda would be spurred by development in the area. We evaluated the cost of what that would be to go ahead and make that connection to Wildcat Way and push McCollum north, pretty significant, really a bridge that would have to be built across the drainage. Trying to, don't hold, I think it was around three million dollars just to complete that loop. It was somewhere in that neighborhood.
So, no, we're not.
You know, one of these days, I mean, it is, it is where the road needs to extend. Country Club is gonna be.
Are we talking about McCollum or Country Club? You said McCollum.
I'm going McCollum, from McCollum north on Country Club.
Yeah, Country Club Road.
Correct, yeah. Yeah, okay, sorry, I wanted to make sure I was.
Bridges are expensive.
Yeah.
Well, and with, with the in-and-out traffic with the new elementary school, and not having another way out, that's why we felt it was pretty important to make no parking on that section.
Is there any, as we, as we evaluate the, as we evaluate the traffic that's gonna be on McCollum, and that maybe some of it turns back west on McCollum and heads to Main Street? And the, what are the trigger points to start talking about traffic signals at McCollum and Main?
In, maybe we're looking at a little different concept than a signal. In fact, KDOT will be down sometime later in June to look at that area with us. It's a project we've submitted for funds in the past, a geometric improvement of that intersection. And really, it would be medians within the air, within the middle of Main and McCollum that would allow left turns, which would not affect southbound traffic. There would almost be like an acceleration lane to get onto Main Street. It would, it would just make the intersection function a little bit.
Nothing like one of those roundabouts or anything, I hate those.
Well, if, if, the traffic way, if a traffic way or something ever happens, which our city continues to grow residentially, we're gonna need another connection point. A roundabout is, is something that we've talked about.
Loud face.
Just for the efficient flow. The difficulties with the signal there are, and we've done, we're gonna do another traffic study when Grand View gets up and going. We did it with the middle school, we even did one last year to support, try to support a project with KDOT. And there's just that rush, there's that rush in the morning, and then there's that rush at three o'clock, and then other than that, it's pretty dead out there, and so.
Soccer games on Saturday.
Yeah.
Okay.
But it definitely does not, even currently, and probably even with Grand View, meet the warrants for a signal in KDOT's criteria.
Okay. Okay, any further questions for Scott? If none, I'd entertain a motion.
Resolution number twenty-eight sixty-one.
Mr. Mayor, I move that resolution twenty-eight sixty-one, a resolution pertaining to no parking signs be approved and instructs that to move forward with the bike lane on the east side of Country Club Road from Twelfth to McCollum Road.
Second. Case been moved in second, any further comment, question? In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Next on our agenda would be the acceptance of the consideration for sales tax recommendations, something we talked about at our work session. This is not a, this is simply accepting the recommendations, and as, as our budget session continues, these items can still be discussed, but this is. Acceptance, acceptance, accepting for consideration.
Yeah.
Any further questions, comments on this?
Would you explain to the public what you mean by consideration?
By consideration?
Yes.
What's meant by consideration is we accept these recommendations as were brought to us by the sales tax advisory committee on the spending of the excess sales tax. And consideration means we take them under consideration as we move forward with our budget. It doesn't mean we're approving them, approving the money as written here.
I just want, want the public to understand what consideration means.
Okay.
Now, with that said, if you were to approve this list, we're gonna plug it into the budget, so if there's changes that you would like to see made to this, we would need to know, I mean, we, it can be changed in the future, but we're not likely to just bring this up again unless there's a need to, because this, these projects have a dedicated source of funding, and unless there's a reason to change that, we're gonna go ahead and just plug it into the budget. But it is approved as part of the two thousand and nineteen budget.
So, approving this approves it to go into the budget unless we bring it up.
Right, exactly, yeah, you'll have to remember to bring it up if you'd like to. Otherwise, we're just gonna go ahead and move this forward and continue that. Unless you tell me to go ahead and flag it, and then we'll bring it up then, but.
I didn't know what I understood it was, but if that's what it is, that's what it is.
You can always change it if you want.
Yeah, it's always gonna change them.
We're gonna use it as a plug number for that.
I think there were a couple things that we talked about at work session.
That's right.
That hopefully were being looked into.
That's right.
That might possibly change my consideration.
Okay, I've got another question, then, did you bring it back up? Does that take three, does that take three of us, or can one commissioner request that something be brought back up for discussion?
Yeah, I mean, we can.
Once we do this, unless three of us say we wanna talk about number six again, how's that?
Well, let's say you wanna talk about number six, what we would do, just, we would just flag it, flag this for a future discussion. What I'm saying, though, is that if, let's say that everyone was cool with this list, then we would just take that and we would put it into the budget. But if there are questions, as Kendra alluded to, and you have one on number six here, then we'll just go.
I don't have anything, I just said six, 'cause.
I was just randomizing. Yeah, so if you do have a question, or you have a concern, or you would like to talk about it further, then we'll just bring it up at a future meeting, that's no problem.
But one.
Yeah.
One commissioner can do that, okay.
Yep.
We did it last year, I believe for the first time, most years it gets accepted and just put into the budget. But last year, there was a USD four ninety path in there, and you, you had all agreed that there was a better place to spend the money for the city at that time, and so we changed it, and so that, that's what that consideration allows you to do, is just change that if you need to.
Oddball.
Okay.
Oddball, that's me.
All right, if there's any further questions or comments, if none, I'd entertain a motion.
I move to accept for consideration the recommendations of the excess sales tax committee.
Second.
It's been moved in second, any further question or comment? In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries five to zero, thank you. Brings us to item seventeen on our agenda, which is reports from the commission. Anything, need a new business or reports, please, for the commission.
Airport is not met, and youth commission is off for the summer, and start back up again in September.
Anything?
That's you.
I got a call today, and going south on Haverhill Road from Central, when you get to the old AAA building, there's a sign that says trucker. Then, as you keep going down to the trafficway, there's no more signage until you get past the trafficway and it says no trucks. And, I mean, you can see it before you get past the intersection. But the sign marking the truck route is on the west side of Haverhill, and you can't see it unless you're coming west on the trafficway. And they were wondering if there could possibly be a sign a little bit farther north with an arrow pointing trucker. I went and drove it, and there's not one there, so. We talked, we talked about that, he said the sign fell down.
That's what Brad communicated to me, somebody informed him that the sign had fell down.
Okay, well, it's still down.
I'm gonna put it up.
I didn't, I didn't go walk the ditch or anything, but, anyway.
So, I will check on that, make sure that gets put back out, 'cause he did have it, it was down.
It was just one guy's. And we all know it. Okay, I'm sure everybody's getting tired of hearing this, but are we still mowing the museum?
Presently, we are, yes.
Okay, when are we gonna stop mowing the museum?
Well, we will stop mowing when the commission directs me to stop mowing the museum's yard.
I mean, if we're gonna do that, are we gonna go to the Coots Museum and the World War II Museum and watch their windows and sweep out in front of their building, I mean?
Well, since we're currently not doing that, no, we won't do that.
Okay, but, that's my point.
Your points, your points will take.
Why are we still doing it?
But I need the commission to tell me.
I guess I'm looking for some.
And I'm, and I'm, are we, last I heard, they weren't even, they weren't even interested in finding their own mower? Is that kind of person to mow? And then that, did the conversation just die?
Um, yeah, it did, for various reasons, most notably, they currently don't have an executive director.
Oh, that did turn the corner, really?
So, but I haven't had any conversations.
And I don't mean to pick on them, and I don't really, but, I mean, I've had more people are, can, you know, not, I guess, not pissed or anything, but they understand we don't have the money, about, we can't even spray mosquitoes. But we can go mow a private entity's grass field at the cost of, I think they, we were told it was sixteen man-hours every time we do it, plus fuel, plus wear and tear on our machines, and, I'm sorry, I just, you know, I just don't see how we can justify doing that anymore.
I would go back to our, my original thought on this topic was, is that I say we, for now, take care of outside the fence until they get a, if they don't have anybody to do any negotiating for them, I mean, that's kind of.
They got a board of directors.
Well, I mean, and then the outside, you know. I'd say stop it too, there, I guess, I mean, if we're gonna.
And I'm okay with outside fence, I mean, we do that anyway, don't we? Don't we mow that right-of-way, that commercial right-of-way? I think we do.
I imagine in that case, just because we've been mowing their entire property, if it wasn't for that fact, I doubt that we would mow it.
Wouldn't be, George, mowing right-of-ways.
Mowing the right-of-way, and then.
I mean, I mow my right-of-way at my house, but he comes and mows mine.
Hopefully not in the street.
Absolutely not. I've got a blower, I blow it back up in the yard. Right now, I don't do anything, 'cause I don't, all I've got is dirt. Blade fry back up, need grass. There's a sign out there on East Central that says, this is city property, not mine, and it, the weeds are up real tall. Have you seen it out there across from, across from the museum? Uh-uh.
I haven't seen that.
Yeah, it's out there. Where's this at? Across from the museum.
I guess I'd like to direct, direct David to make contact with the museum, and, and before we just cut it off, necessarily talk to him about the desire to stop doing what, doing that, and rather than just it be a cold turkey thing tonight, and let you come back with what the solution would be. If it's an agreement to mow outside the fence, it's fine, if not, but to express our desire that that relationship change.
Okay.
And I guess, my understanding of some of that also was we had, we had correctional facility labor helping to mow that, which takes cities, at this point, take somebody from the city to, to observe.
Right.
Them doing the work, so whether or not we're, whether we don't have the correctional labor anymore to do that, then, then that's, then that's a reason to make contact with the museum and get a different arrangement. If we do still have that, well, then, then it's our manpower that has to observe the, the labor force, if it stays that way. But I'd be in favor of, of making contact with them, let them know the desire of the commission, that this ratio just, just change, and come back with a solution.
Okay.
About contact with the deadline, give two weeks.
I'd say by our next meeting.
Give two weeks.
I can, I can definitely contact them, I guess my question would be, I guess my preference would be that, do we, do we give them until, you know, a period of time before we cut it off, or do we give them two weeks, or whatever? I mean, that's, that's the only thing I would need to know, is when do you all stop?
There are Buku people in this town that cut grass.
That's true.
They will not have any problem finding someone to do it, I guarantee you. I bet if, they will line up to cut that.
Okay, just get on Facebook, you've got all this.
Are we still using correctional facility labor to cut that grass?
Uh, we currently do not have correctional labor at this point in time, we hope to get it soon, but. We hope to get it soon, but we have not gotten a training schedule with the Department of Corrections.
So they're, they're, they're in lines to the, the motive to get in touch with them and going to change the arrangement?
Well, that, that is one. I guess the other question then would be, if that's the catalyst, and we get them back, are we going to then go back? I mean, I guess that's what I-
We'll talk, we'll talk about that, if, if and when we get them back, in my opinion. First thing we need to do, I mean, we can't, we can't go back and mow it until we quit mowing it.
That's, that's correct.
With the complaints I've been getting on the spray, and, and us telling them that we're not gonna spray the city this year, 'cause we don't have it in the budget, I think you need to work something out with them and tell them to go private, get a private service.
In terms of mosquito spraying?
No, mowing that lawn over there, but we can't afford it either.
There's your three.
Which, which lot are you talking about?
The one at the museum.
Oh, okay, I got you.
I mean, it's only fair, there's a lot of people upset with, that we're not spraying, 'cause we can't afford it, and we'll turn around and give them free service to the museum. Sixteen hours each time, that's a lot of money. Well, we could spend that on buying the spraying machine for seventy thousand dollars.
That's correct. We could do that.
There's your three.
There's my three. Kendra, do you have any words of wisdom?
Ah, we don't need to be mowing it, so.
Thanks, thank you. Okay, so I will get in touch with them, and I will give them the word, and then I'll give you all an update at the next meeting, or if not before. But you'll definitely get it at the next meeting. Thank you.
Thanks, David.
No problem.
Okay.
I don't have, I don't have much, I, I think I reported back from Parsons Rec last week at the work session. We discussed the, the why, and the negotiations and talking to them. I still feel like there was about a fifty-fifty reaction to it, about half were, or at half were against it. And then, anything else from there? Did we ever talk to AT&T about that box on Central at Summit? I guess that was a Brad thing.
That was a Brad question, and I believe that he had talked to them, but I have not heard the update on that yet, so.
Okay.
They, they've bid the work, I believe, last time I talked to AT&T, it's on their schedule to do something.
Really?
Yep.
Nice, okay. Troon North, this was something that probably brought up, that I, I noticed myself. There is a water leak of some sort on Troon North, and it's, I can take you, just send someone out there, drive up Troon, and drive around the circle, and you'll see where I'm talking about. I believe it's been running for a couple of years, possibly someone sprinkler, possibly a water line.
Okay. But those sprinklers, I think, are from the HOA.
It's always running.
Always running?
It's always running. My mother-in-law lives up there, and I noticed it, I was out there on Sunday.
We'll send someone up to check it out.
They get a big water bill if it was.
Well, I would think so too, maybe they don't know. I mean, I, I-
Is it a sump pump, maybe, that's keeping some wat-
It's, it's coming over the curb and running down, it's on the west side of the street, believe me, you pull into Troon North and you'll see it. It runs all the way down to the storm drain.
There any basements up there, aren't there?
Yeah, there are basements.
It's not a natural sprain like down on South DePico where that runs out of those people's yard and runs all the time.
I don't think so, I don't recall any sprains.
I think it's, honestly, I think it's just someone sprinkled it.
We'll send someone up to check it out tomorrow and see if we can figure out what it is. I'll take a look.
Okay, and the, the last thing I got is fences. There was a, I received a phone call two weeks ago about a fence being put up on Central, and I asked, I asked Tabitha, it was, Mrs. Johnson wanted to know, and she was concerned if I block her, coming, block her via vision coming onto Central. And I believe someone went by, but what I'd liked, I guess what I'd like someone to go over just for the public, is what, Cliff Notes, what can and can't they do? Is there a reason that, I mean, can you put a big stocking fence up on Central, is there, does anybody have that information here?
Yeah, I can go through that. First, first off, just message, anyone that's putting a fence up in town anywhere requires a permit, so they need to come in, visit with us. At that time, we go through what they can and can't do, where it can and can't be placed, and so on. Fences in backyard can be, so anything behind the front of the house can be up to six feet tall, and they can be privacy, chain link, pretty much anything. If they are taller than six foot, then it requires a special use for them.
Okay.
Fences within any front yard must be fifty percent opaque, so like, thick picket, like every other board missing. And they cannot be taller than four feet.
Okay. That was the scenario that we were dealing with, that one.
In front yards, it has to be decorative, it cannot be chain link, it must be wrought iron, pickets, something of that nature, it has to be decorative.
I think, I, that answers, and that's what he did in the end, that he did what, he, he fell into those, so I, but I would have known that, and I couldn't answer the questions, that's why I submitted it to you guys.
Yep, great, anytime, and, and just like, I'd message again, anyone thinking about building a fence, you know, come talk to us, and, and talk to your neighbors as well. That's quite helpful, just get out and go next door and say, "Hey, I'm thinking about doing this," a lot of times that helps.
Get the permit, though. Get, get the permit, get the permit and then you get your information, I guess is that's.
Yeah. Okay. I think we're not gonna get the information without pulling a permit as well.
Right.
Which, which that information, also, I think we found-
Can't be that much, can it?
It's online, yeah.
Or a fence permit?
Or a library, or to a city hall, or an engineering.
Okay.
Yeah, but they need to, to get approved permit, they need to come visit with us, they can't just fill out a form online-
Right.
And think they have a fence permit, so, yeah.
Right.
Right here, go on.
The only thing that I have is, when is Marmathan coming up?
Tentatively scheduled for bid the last week of July.
Has Art Anderson's been complaining about potters?
Well, we are, we are scrambling to get that one done, and, and that project, we're hoping, and it's dependent on some activity in the industrial park and some development, we're, we're hoping is kind of falling within the same timeframe of improvements of Rocky Road and Oil Hill. So you should see those coming soon as well.
Brad, they told me the other day, they, they did drop some, some hot patch on to Marmathan.
I, I noticed they did.
Yeah.
Good, good.
Everything great?
That's it.
Okay. I don't consider I have anything, other than I would report that the Project Wichita Visioning Group, they met actually late this afternoon. I was not able to, to go in anticipation of this meeting, but they've finished the focus groups, now they're moving into more of a survey, online survey part of it. I'm anxious to see some of the reports out of that, so those who are able to attend the focus group at the college a couple of weeks ago, thank you. I'm anxious to see some results, report about. That's really all I, all I have. We'll move on to our next item, which is open city manager's report.
Yeah, just a few things, some of these are kind of important. On June tenth, the city will memorialize the sixtieth anniversary of the nineteen fifty-eight tornado. And the El Dorado Rotary Club is going to conduct a sixtieth anniversary memorial in Grand Park, beginning at 5:45 PM on that same day. And so, one of the things they have requested the city do is that at 5:45 on June tenth, 5:45 PM on June tenth, the city will air the storm sirens for one minute. However, we will not do that in the event that there is inclement weather forecasted for that evening. And that one minute will be to memorialize those thirteen folks that perished during the storm, as well as to raise awareness for tornadoes, and also to celebrate the rebuild that took place after that. So that will be coming up on June tenth, 5:45 PM, again at Grand Park, all the sirens throughout town will be sounded for one minute. So it is not a normal siren, it's also not a test, but we want to make sure everyone has that. We'll have that on our website, Facebook accounts, we'll distribute that as widely as we can, so that folks know that it's not a, it's not a storm. And again, in the event of inclement weather, whether it's happening or forecasted, we will not do the, the siren, and that way there's no confusion.
That is my earliest memory.
Do what?
That is my earliest memory, that tornado.
Really?
I was a year and a half old, and I remember it.
You were just a babe.
Yeah.
We're not gonna say how old I was.
I don't remember many of them until I was like five, but I, I remember-
I was all the next three minutes.
We were, we lived two doors down from where I live now, we were in a storm cellar in the backyard. My father had a little gas station at Central and Alagany, and he came flying home, and my mother, myself, my sister was a baby, my mother was holding her, and we were in the basement, or in that cellar, and I remember my dad and the dog, the dog was down there. I remember him throwing that cellar door open, and I had a hold of my mom's pant leg, and I remember looking out and seeing stuff blow by. I just, pretty rememberable.
Yeah.
I'm sure.
Makes me precious.
Indeed. The sales tax task force started their work reviewing options for the one cent sales tax that is going to be coming up here soon. They're going to be putting together, they're gonna be reviewing some options, as well some additional information, with the goal of having a recommend, recommendation to the city commission here in the next couple of months, so that we can get that on the November ballot for voters to consider. The United States, well, the, I guess it would be the Kansas Governor's Office, Governor Kuyer, had the opportunity to submit opportunity zones or census tracts throughout the state of Kansas that were eligible for opportunity zone designation to the United States Department of Treasury. And I just wanted to communicate to the public that El Dorado had one census tract that was submitted, and that census tract was certified by the United States Department, well, first of all, by the, by the governor, and then also by the Department of Treasury, as an opportunity zone, which is an incentive that was in the recent tax bill that Congress passed at the end of last year. And so there are some incentives that are built into the opportunity zone designation that we'll be talking about here soon. Most notably is the ability for investors to take their capital gains from selling stocks or real estate and invest those in opportunity zones, and get a deferred, deferral of their capital gains. In some cases, it can also lead to a cancel, cancel, cancellation of those capital gains taxes as well. So, good news for us, because we can take advantage of this, there were seventy-four designated zones in the state of Kansas. Every state had a number of zones designated within their state, but El Dorado is the only designated opportunity zone within Butler County, and that designation will last for ten years, so we'll be able to utilize that hopefully, and we're putting together some strategies, trying to figure out what exactly we can do with this. But most notable, the IRS is currently developing guidance on the use of the opportunity zones, and they're gonna come out that this summer, and so once that comes out, investors and communities will have a better blueprint for how to put this into action and get some benefit going within your community. But I just wanted the public to know that this was happening, and it's good news for us, and hopefully we'll be able to make something, make something of it.
That could end up being that.
That's a, that's a really big deal, it's been, we, we knew that Linda, John Lee, and David were working on that, announcing that as a, as a great thing. That, that census tract is essentially downtown, a big part of it's downtown, which I'm excited about identifying what kind of, what that could look like, and how we can attract investors to, to downtown with their capital gains excess, so it, I think it's a really big deal. It's a, it's gonna be exciting to get this move forward and see how it plays out, yeah.
The city flag contest, the voting for the first round finalist, if you will, closed, so it's been narrowed down to three finalists. The plan now is to continue with the, the final round, if you will, and so there'll be three ways to vote. Voting will begin on June fourteenth, which is incidentally Flag Day. You can vote in person at the Coots Museum, you can vote online, we'll have a form available on our website, and you can also call in your vote at City Hall at three two one ninety-one hundred, if you can't do either of the other two. Voting will be open from June fourteenth to four PM on June sixteenth, which is a Saturday, and then, once that's finished, we'll tabulate the results, and we'll bring the final winning flag design to the commission for review.
Two days, that's it?
Well, Flag Day is, I believe, on Thursday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, so it'll be-
Three days.
Yeah. And so we'll bring that all to you, and you guys can talk about it and go from there.
Which three of them, finals?
You know, I would do a disservice if I tried to describe them, I should have brought them, but I, I don't have them. I get those from Molly and get them over to you.
I'm just, I, my wife will kill me if I don't ask.
You can just tell her that I'm not very good at describing flags, being-
Yeah, I'm just saying.
I mean, I think, if I remember-
Every time I say that, it's a question of, hey, we got three finalists, well, which ones are they? I don't know, you know, I could just, if you could get that over, that'd be great.
I will, I will do that as quick as I can, and it may not be tonight, but it will be, be tomorrow, Molly will be back tomorrow. And then, as, as Commissioner Guthrie mentioned, we will be having further discussion on the Y, the city YMCA proposal for recreation programming. We had originally scheduled a public forum for June seventh, but in the interest of time, due to the proximity of that, the closeness of that, we're gonna bump that to June twentieth, at five thirty PM at the Train Depot, and that'll give us some time to ramp up some advertisement and get the word out, we didn't want to have it and have no show up, because we didn't have enough word spread out. So, June twentieth, five thirty at Train Depot, and we will not have the one on the seventh, just due to time constraints.
Okay.
And that's all I have for now.
I would say one more thing, June, this Saturday, June ninth, the symphony in the Flin Hills at our neighbor at Rosalia. If anybody, I guess there's tickets still available, if there's, anybody wants to go, that's a remarkable experience. It's gonna be fun, I would just say that. Put out your welcome mats, we're gonna have books through town.
It's gonna be hot.
It's always hot. I just hope it's not windy.
Windy, yeah.
Last time it was really windy. Okay, move on for executive session.
Ashton was unable to make it tonight, so the item that we had scheduled is not, time is not of the essence, so due to the fact that she was unable to be here, we weren't able to remove it from the agenda prior to that, prior to knowing that, so I would ask that we not go into executive session this time, and we'll just postpone that until the next meeting.
Well, the next thing is adjournment.
I move we adjourn.
Second.
Moving to second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. We are adjourned, thank you.